Calling this meeting to order, this is the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is six o'clock, today is October the twentieth of two thousand and twenty-two. First item is, roll call please. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Jorge Dominguez.
Present.
Mike Barone.
Present.
Jose Eduardo Garcia.
Present.
Johnny Narváez.
Present.
Yu Xian Huang. Larry Dovalina.
Here.
Daniela Salapaz. Ana Gabriela Villarreal. Erasmo Villarreal.
Present.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, we do have four. Thank you very much. Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I wanted to move to excuse the council.
Okay, well, just before, we have a motion to excuse the-
Second.
The Commissioners. The Commissioners are absent, and a second by Narváez. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Alright.
The Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, into the Republic of America. One nation, under God. In his will, he returns justice for all.
Alright, the next item that we have is the approval of the minutes. So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second advice.
Second advice, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 This is the approval of the minutes of September fifteenth and October the sixth. Next item is public hearings, and the first public hearing is, they're gonna, these are ordinances for annexations, if I'm not mistaken, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven ordinances for voluntary annexation. I'm gonna ask the Planning Director to read them into the record, because, and then we'll just go ahead, and if anybody has any comments or any concerns after we read them into the record, we will address them at that time.
Perfect.
Alright?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number eight, item A, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M1, Light Manufacturing District, on attractive land totaling eight point six nine acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract one, Alza Tract, located south of FM fourteen seventy-two and east of Iron Mine Road. Item B, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M1, Light Manufacturing District, on attractive land totaling three hundred and five point forty acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract three, Emerald Review Tract, located west of FM fourteen seventy-two and south of Ave Boulevard. Item C, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M1, Light Manufacturing District, on attractive land totaling three point zero five acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract two, Terraval Tract, located south of FM fourteen seventy-two and east of Iron Mine Road. Item D, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of R1A, single-family reduced area district, on attractive land totaling forty-two point eighty-seven acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract four, AFW Investments Two Tract, located north of State Highway fifty-nine and west of Wildwood De Nina Parkway. Item E, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M1, Light Manufacturing District, on attractive land totaling one point nine six acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract five, Los Milagros Rent Two Tract, located east of FM fourteen seventy-two and south of Beeta Drive. Item F, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M1, Light Manufacturing District, on attractive land totaling three hundred eighty-eight point ninety-seven acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract six, Five MWATR Industrial Tract, located east of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of Beeta Drive. Item G, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M1, Light Manufacturing District, on attractive land totaling six point zero acres, more or less, as described by meets and bounds in the attached exhibit A, and known as annexation tract seven, San Daniel Tract, located east of FM fourteen seventy-two and south of Beeta Drive.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If there's anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against any of these annexation tracts, please step up. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor or against these annexations? Alright, what are the wishes of the Commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and approve item six, eight, or six G.
It would be a recommendation for us to come back with an ordinance, yes. Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you all very much. The next item that we have is, amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by amending ordinance twenty sixteen dash zero dash one thirty-nine, which authorizes a conditional use permit for an amusement redemption machine establishment on Lot A Block One, Aniels Associates Limited Liability Company Phase One, located at ninety-one ten McPherson Road, in order to remove Aniel Gupta and Yan Ping Ling, and replace with Aniel Gupta and Jorge Inceño Barcenas, as a parties to whom the permit is issued. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor?
Before, before we get started, is somebody here from legal?
Yes, sir.
Is it legal to transfer a CUP from one person to another?
Uh, yes, our, our-
What if you have a bar, and the bar gets raided, and they violate the law? Are you allowing the bar license to be transferred to somebody else?
Provided that they come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and request that, then it would be up to y'all to recommend, make a recommendation at that time, based on, you know, the change of circumstances or what have you. The transferability prohibition is meant to prohibit an owner from transferring it on their own, unilaterally.
And it's not meant to curtail the violation of law, criminal law?
Violation of criminal law would be, would be a separate matter, and then it would, it would probably revoke that special use permit at that time.
Hasn't this establishment been closed by law enforcement?
That I'm not aware of.
Has it?
Not that we're aware of.
Who represents it?
I, the applicant is here in the audience, right?
Oops.
What?
Do you want to open the public hearing?
Here's. You go.
Yes?
Yes, sir, your name for the record, please.
Go ahead and stand in the middle so that they can hear you on the mic.
Okay. Hi, Aniel Gupta, I'm from the Aniels Associates LLC. And we're just changing the actually tenant, there is nothing, we're not changing anything else.
Okay, I think the question the Commissioner had was, has this establishment-
I'm not doing that business, that's, that's not my business or like that. I just rent the place, and I'm just changing the tenant.
Okay, so, so right now, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
So, the person that is currently running the business, is the business running?
Sorry?
Is the business open?
No, right now the business is, because they, they leave the place, so right now, like, my space is empty.
So, when did you stop running the business?
No, no, I don't, I don't have that business. I just have to rent the place. That business is not mine.
So, it's never, it's never been yours?
No, never been given.
I think that we deny.
Okay, let me, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not doing that business over there.
Alright, alright.
I'm just trying to change the tenant, that's all.
Okay, you are in favor though of this action going forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for him?
One quick question, Mr. Chairman. The, the CUP in question, if, if, if it's, the building is closed, it's not in business, the CUP is non-existent. So, coming before us to request an amendment for something that is non-existent is not even, is not even appropriate. The new ordinance for the, for the, for the maquinitas, it gives a specific, it gives a specific guidance as to how he can go back and reopen his business, but not by amending the CUP.
But I'm not opening the business.
That's my, that's my comment.
That's not my business, and I'm not opening the business, I'm just trying to change the tenant, and I'm just renting the place.
But the CUP was originally given to him as if he were the operator, and he just admitted that he was not, that he handed it over to somebody else, so it completely violates the ordinance. I still move to deny.
I second that motion.
Well, I think we still need to hear who is for and against, still a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Gupta. Anybody else wishes to speak for or against? For or against? For or against? Alright, now I'll entertain a motion.
I still move to-
Motion to deny, and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention. Alright, motion is denied. Next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two point three square feet of land conveyed by D. Renee Nava. Uh, this property is located west of Coal Mine Road and south of FM fourteen seventy-two road from AG to M1. Public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant Renee A. Nava, owner, applicant, fellow consulting LLC, Oscar Castillo, is the representative. Property description, location, approximately fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two point three square feet, located east, sorry, west of Coal Mine Road and south of FM fourteen seventy-two road. Zone change request, AG to an M1, the proposed use, industrial. The applicant did not identify the proposed industrial use. Letter sent nine four zero against zero. Location view. Aerial map. Street view. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. For the record, Rudy Santillan from Peua Consulting, representing the owner of the property in this zone case, were in favor of the zone change. If you have any questions?
Any questions?
We have your answer.
Rudy Santillan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? Alright, what are the wishes of the Commission?
Motion to close public hearing, go with staff recommendation.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Dominguez, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against, motion carries, thank you. The next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately point nine six acre tract of land. Uh, this property is located north of Ave Nida Los Presidentes and west of Concord Hills Boulevard, from R1 to B3.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant VE Real Estate LLC, owner, applicant. Property description, location, approximately zero point nine six acre, located north of Amalina Los Presidentes and west of Concord Hills Boulevard. Zone change request is an R1 to a B3. The proposed use is commercial, the applicant has not identified a specific proposed commercial use. Letter sent nine four zero against zero. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm John V. Evans, and I'm the owner of Real Estate Investments, and I'm the one who's proposing to change from an R1 to an R3, B3. So, y'all have any questions?
Anybody in the Commission have any questions?
Do you know what the proposed use is?
Commercial use, maybe gas station or something like that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? Alright, wishes of the Commission?
Motion to close public hearing and go with staff recommendation.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Commissioner Dominguez, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against, motion carries, thank you. The next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a mini storage warehouse on Lot Three and Six Block One, Avery Retail Subdivision, located at sixty-seven ten Springfield Avenue and one oh four Mann Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant Arms LTD, owner Glenn Prus, representative. Property description, Lot Three and Six Block One, Avery Retail Subdivision, located at sixty-seven ten Springfield Avenue and one oh four Mann Road. Zone change request, it's a special use permit for a mini storage slash warehouse. Proposed use, mini storage warehouse. Letter sent nineteen four zero to against. Location view. Aerial map. Street view.
Avery, Avery Retail.
Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed special use permit. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the special use permit?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Glenn Prus, I'm with Compass Rural Estate Investments in Laredo, and we represent the owner in this application. And in addition to this application, I would like the Commission to consider a waiver of line item five and conditions submitted by the city, which covers dumpsters and waste receptacles.
That, you want, wait, wait, you're asking for a waiver of the dumpsters?
Can you- And trash- I'm sorry, a variance, for, we would like to place dumpsters on site. That line item five prohibits, prohibits the use of any collection device.
Can you put that up?
Yes, sir. Oh, oh, it's on the, in your packet, sir.
So, the odd part about this is that it's ordinance to do that. I can see the logic behind wanting a dumpster. And I believe if you drive around town, you'll see dumpsters in just about every location. So, I don't know when this was written up, the ordinance?
Yeah, it's part of the Land Development Code. So, in order to change that provision, an ordinance amendment would have to go to counsel for that.
Okay, so the Commission would not be able to grant a variance because it's not a planning issue?
It's, it's part of the, the-
It's part of the ordinance that we cannot-
Can't waive the requirement.
We can't waive the requirement of a special use permit?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against? Against? Alright, what are the wishes of the Commission?
Who were the two people that were against?
Um, I'm not, sure, Mr. Dominguez.
Huh?
No, we have it, we have it there, on record in the office, but I don't have the, the-
The only concern I have is that this is one of the nicer areas of town, and we're gonna put a mini storage in front of it. It's almost like putting a mini storage in River Oaks in Houston.
Yes, sir.
Can I address the-
Come on.
So, our clients are absolutely concerned with the looks of this property, they live across the street, and they have a reputation of building nice properties in Laredo, and they want to keep that reputation up. And they would like to build a Class A facility with climate-controlled facility on site. Uh, it would be an improvement to pretty much everything that exists on that street today. Uh, landscaped, privacy walls around the property. So, I, we understand your concern, but the, the goal is to build a facility that exceeds everybody's expectations on that site.
Okay.
It's empty land now.
It is.
Yeah, that's a corner there. Alright, what are the wishes of the Commission? So, many, so, just to get, special use permits are required for mini storages?
Yes.
Yes. In this zones, yes.
In this zone, which is-
And the ordinance doesn't allow for it to be transferable?
Um, for mini storage warehousing, the code doesn't identify to whom it has to be issued.
Lo cambiamos. Will you amend that today? You can do that, you can transfer, can, after you do. I know he, they just mentioned about those improvements that they're, are those within the, within this agreement, the SCP?
Which improvements, I'm sorry?
He was talking about the design that they're picking up for this-
There, there's a site plan attached, which will become part of the ordinance.
Of, of those improvements that they're talking about?
Of the, the, all, everything that's on his site plan should, will become part of the ordinance.
It's incorporated, is this?
Into the ordinance.
Yeah, would you have a-
Site plan?
And he confirms with the company.
Yeah, elevations of-
Is this, uh, let's see, on button? Is that working?
There you go.
Is that down? So, that's an elevation of this facility, this would be fronting Springfield, and Mann Road would be on this side.
Okay. So, it's kind of like we're next to the apartments.
Let me, so the apartments, the new apartments would be on-
Yeah, on the north side.
Older apartments be on the side.
Yeah.
And here is a-
Broad Acres. Or what is it? What is it called?
It's right next to Broad Acres.
So, yes, lighting, uh, landscaping, of, the wall, the fence, you know, all that stuff is included in the comments.
Yeah, well, that's part of the requirement, that you're gonna have to have an OPEC fence on.
Right, right, that is the plan for the entire property.
Yeah. Any other questions? No? Alright, what are the wishes of the Commission?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second advice.
Second advice, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against?
I'm against.
We have one against, motion carries. The next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for a bar on Lot Three Block One, Del Mar North, filing number one, located at seventy-seven eighteen McPherson Road, building E dash one, suite one, and two, three thousand three hundred eighty-eight square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant Falcon Bank owner Renee Renjel Jr. is the representative. Property description, location, Lot Three Block One, Del Mar North, filing number one, located at seventy-seven eighteen McPherson Road, building E one, suite one, and two, three thousand three hundred eighty-eight square feet. The zone change request, it's a conditional use permit for a bar. Uh, proposed use, a bar, La Comena, B and G. Letter sent twenty-six four zero against zero. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zoning overview. Future land use. Staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed conditional use permit. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the conditional use permit?
Uh, good evening, I'm Renee Renjel, I'm, I'm requesting the conditional use permit for La Comena Bar. If you guys have any questions, I'm very happy to answer.
Does anybody have any questions? Brooks, go ahead.
Just real quick, the, I noticed that the parking spaces are, are less than the, than the required. Vanessa, what, what, what's the requirement there, and how short are we by allowing this permit to go?
Do you have the, do you have the number?
Um, I believe, I, I don't know, I, I thought they were in the packet.
I apologize, I don't have the numbers with me.
Okay. Are we closed?
Yes, sir, um, the parking spots are the directly ones in front of it, but the building next to us, that's also owned by the bank, and that's more like a conference center that they use, and they said we're more than, uh, we can use the parking spots there, and there's also the overflow parking beside the bank also.
Okay. So, in comment number three, we have it down, is, they have four hundred and thirty-two parking spaces to work with.
Yes, sir. But it also says that, that, that they're less than the ones that are required. Parking is therefore not expected, does not provide four hundred or so spaces, so, uh-
The, I think the issue with this is that the, we counted the spaces immediately adjacent to the, to that building, and so that's why we were not concerned because of the spaces that were available on, in the rest of the complex.
Yes.
Um, and it seems that there's proposed two other buildings that are gonna be built sort of to the south of that. So, that's why we were, although short, um, we were not concerned that it was gonna have a negative effect.
We're good to go.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the conditional use permit? Or against the conditional use permit?
Uh, good evening, Henry Alomna, for the record. Uh, so, I guess some years back when we got a flyer, um, yeah, this is Mr. Smith, my neighbor.
How you doing, Chairman?
Uh, so I live at twelve seventeen Andrew. Um, years back, we got a flyer, same like this one. I never said, yeah, I said, you know what, they're, they're opening up a restaurant, good thing. The only thing is that, uh, I guess we live north of Border Foundry, and Border Foundry has a patio that faces east. Every Wednesday and Thursday, they have karaoke nights. Uh, I have a thirteen-year-old daughter and a fifteen-year-old daughter that, uh, they have to go to school, they have to go to bed early. And I guess when they first started, it was kind of okay, I guess, but now I guess either they got too confident that the noise, or I guess the, the, I guess the level of the noise is, uh, just too much. Uh, I had skylights in my residence, in my, my, both, both of my restaurants, I had to take them out because it was, uh, it is very loud. So, I was just wondering, I guess, what the conditions are for this permit that Mr.-
Yeah, what we need is, who's gonna monitor the noise afterwards? I mean, we don't have problem for, for them being there, the thing is, the noise-
If I remember correctly, the police department, suppose the one that is in charge of doing the noise monitoring.
Right.
Okay.
After, I noted that I live at twelve fifteen Avenue Circle, and once, uh, two in the morning comes along, they, everybody goes home, both of them. There's a lot of people that stay outside the parking area, and then you could hear them conversating. And, uh, it's about three or four in the morning. And we're not, I am not enjoying my backyard because of this. Bought the property back in age nine, and I know that there was hardly anything there. And, uh, so, what we need is somebody to monitor the, the noise.
Like I said, I mean, you can call PD and tell them that there's an excessive amount of noise, and they have noise, they're supposed to have noise monitors. I don't remember the DPL, I don't know if anybody in Planning, there's a, there's a DPL requirement, I don't know if Ruben, you remember the DPL, the noise outside by any chance? No? There is a certain, you know, threshold, that if the noise is louder than that at eleven PM, then PD can take action on it. I just don't remember the number. But there is a, there is a, a number on how loud the, the music can be after a certain hour.
And then, basically, that was just, I guess, our question, right, if, if this permit, uh, if it's gonna consist of any outside music, that way, you know-
Light, light item ten, I don't know if you wanna go-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, in your, in your packet-
Outdoor music.
Item ten identifies the, the conditions regarding music, and I'll read it for the record.
Yes.
Outdoor music is allowed, however, must be imperceptible on any residential zoning district or residential use. So, it shouldn't, they should not be able to hear it at your property.
Well.
Okay? There shall be no ground vibrations created or sustained which are perceptible on any residential zoning district or residential use. So, neither vibrations nor the actual sound.
I mean, yeah, for, for years, it's, uh, it's been going on, and I guess, uh, now that we've found- That, that we got the flyer, well, you know, I guess, maybe hopefully they, we get, uh, I guess we get out and listen to it, I guess, uh-
Well, this one won't do anything for Border Foundry, unfortunately.
I'm sorry? Well, this, this one- That's fine, that's fine, but, uh, at least, again, we don't just wanna let it go by and then-
Absolutely.
Regret not coming here.
Right, yeah.
Speak out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good comments.
Thank you. Um, I have a concern about item number ten, especially being that they're gonna be open till two in the morning on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And that it's gonna be a bar, um, and to control music outside is very difficult.
Yeah.
And I think all we're doing is allowing an issue that's not gonna be addressed, and it's gonna get nuisance to the, to the neighbors.
Well, we thought, we, usually this says is prohibited. However, you know, in an effort to accommodate the property owner, we thought we would allow- Well, we thought, we, usually this says is prohibited, however, you know, in an effort to accommodate the property owner, we thought we would allow low levels of music.
That, that's very hard to control.
That cannot be heard.
That's very hard to control.
Yeah, once, once you start.
What we would be fine with is prohibited.
You, you can't control levels.
Once you start doing.
But if you look at, in this one, in looking at this one, you know, seeing where the building is, seeing where the location of, of this, pro, this business is gonna be, of the distance that from the residents, we felt they was, it, it was better, I mean, you know, you see Border Foundry, you knew how, you see how close it is to residents, this doesn't have the same, uh, distance, or further away.
Do you need to have outdoor music?
Well, don't you like outdoor music?
Yeah, sure. First of all, for, uh, I understand your concern, but it's an L-C building, so Border Foundry and all of those face the houses, this one's gonna be facing towards Del Mar, so our patio is gonna be that way. And also for everyone else's peace of mind, this is gonna be an upscale bar, it's more jazzy music, I, like, I'm tired of going out and always, can't hear myself talk, can't talk to the person next to me, so I want the music calmer, I want it relaxing, I want a place where you can go drink and just relax with friends. So, the noise, I don't want, I don't want loud, annoying music just playing.
And I understand what you're saying, the problem is, is once this particular facility gets the permit, and for whatever reason, what you were planning to do does not work out, and things change, the music changes, the permit is already there where the music can change, 'cause it doesn't tell you that you can't do outdoor music, yes, you have a very good plan, but like any plan, it can change, and if it changes, the music, you know, could be totally different, you know, and, and that would be, that is what the concern of this, uh, particular body is, I think, right now, that, you know, the music changes, and in most of the, uh, conditional use permits that we have issued, we do not allow outdoor music, because it does present a problem to all the residents around. So, excuse me, I will recognize in a few minutes, it is, it is, and this is why I'm just trying to explain to you how we have operated in the past. This, right now, is the first time we have seen something like this come before this commission, it has never come before, but we also have to balance the residents and the business. And that's what this commission isn't, you know, entrusted to do, and that's what we're trying to come up to, uh, trying to find a proper balance, okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright, does any other commissioner have anything to?
I, I'd like to close the public hearing, if that's alright, or we want to leave it all, I make a motion to close the public.
Just a minute, before we did the planning director.
Motion's on.
Wanted to say something.
Well, he can speak, but I, my motion is to close the public hearing.
Alright, now we can, go ahead.
So when we're, we're looking at this, and being that it's a, a business area, uh, if you look to the north, you'll see that there's an open area of land, which is.
Mr. Chairman, but I thought there was a motion that I made on the floor.
There is, but before we can take the second, I can also take some.
Some comments from staff?
From him, okay? Then I'll take the second.
The motion was to close public hearing?
Yes, sir.
That's the motion I had made.
Allowing you, before we do the second, can we close public hearing?
I need, I think we would need a second.
So the, the idea in looking at this, reviewing this, to the, to the west, you have the bus system, uh, you have an open field, uh, once again, you're gonna have parking and a building to the south of it, and then to the north of it, you're gonna get buildings that are gonna be placed there, so as this builds out, the, the buffers are gonna be in place to handle this, so we, we looked at it from a, the full build-out, what's gonna happen when this thing's built out, but you could see, uh, to the north, and of course, to the west, we don't have residents to that area, and so we didn't think that the, the impact would be.
Okay, that's great, thank you very much, I got a motion on the floor right now.
Yes.
Your motion is to close a public hearing?
Just to close a public hearing and.
Just to close a public hearing right now.
One second.
There's a second, okay, discussion.
Yes, uh, the only thing I can think of is, eh, this street here, the difference between this area and, uh, Border Foundry is that the main, eh, you know, entrance for Border Foundry is a lot of times for this development is McPherson. Eden here is right across the street from the, uh, U I S D, uh, transportation, uh, bus compound, which runs, you know, pretty much throughout the evening, buses coming from out of town, Saturdays, Friday nights, football games, uh, the baseball field there carries a lot of traffic as well, and, um, I don't know if staff considered that, and, and, and the traffic here, and the impact it will be in this area, but no, I don't agree with this, this C U P.
Alright, so your motion then is to clo, close the public hearing, is there anything else on your motion in terms of?
Unless, there's no other discussion, my motion is to close the public hearing and deny the C U P.
Or would you just say eliminate common ten?
Deny the, the whole thing.
Your motion is to deny?
Yes.
Alright, so we have a motion to deny and a second?
No.
No?
The second was only for closing.
For closing the public hearing, alright.
Alright, my motion is to deny the, the C U P.
So we have a motion to deny, do we have a second? Do we have a second? The motion dies for lack of a second, alright?
Make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Including, uh.
To item ten. To item ten?
Yes.
I have a question for Taffin.
Okay.
The C U P is just for the applicant, so if there were to be a change in, in bar or anything like that, or this establishment, would they have to come before us again?
They can, yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, as far as what he has planned, it's just specific for this place.
That's correct.
Okay.
For a bar.
Well.
Now, what, what is the distance for a bar to, to a school, isn't there some, does it meet the distancing?
Yes, it meets all the distance requirements.
To, to the, to the building, to the.
To the front door.
Uh, yeah, yeah, we looked at all the distance requirements, yes.
So, it's, it's to the front door of the school?
Yeah.
Or, or to the building of the, of the compound?
It's from front door to front door, along the, the property front, the property front.
Not property, property line to property line?
No, no.
No.
And which door did you all measure to?
Front door, front door.
Which front door?
The front door of the building, the proper, the, the regulated use to the protected use.
But which building did you measure to on the map?
Uh, I don't know, uh, I don't have it right here with me.
Can we put that up, please?
I have a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have.
And, uh, it was discussed, we have a, a bar in grill, which means that they would be serving food, so that's considered also a restaurant. So, I would like to.
Okay, but the issuance is obviously right now for a bar.
It's, uh, if he says bar and grill and fifty percent.
It doesn't say anything about anything else other than a bar.
Right here on the, uh.
It says it on the letter.
Right on the letter, okay, 'cause I'm looking at the caption on the front, on the way it was advertised.
It says Colmena Bar and Grill will be a veteran-owned, family-run business, we will serve higher-end menu with a focus on a few signature plates that include honey as an accent.
Okay, well then, was it really notes correctly?
Mr. Chair, one of the reasons in, in discussing this with the, the operator, owner, a lot of times what we have is, we have somebody that comes in and they, they tell us it's gonna be a restaurant, then they end up staying open till two in the morning, and, and, you know, going against what they said they're gonna do. Our applicant came forward, told us he's gonna have a restaurant, but also said that he wanted to stay open to two, and so, um, he applied properly for this, so that, that there won't be an issue, because we don't, we don't want them coming in saying they're gonna do one thing and then they do the other, we'd rather they be honest and tell us what they're gonna do, and that's what they did. Once they told us that, then we reviewed their, their layout to, to make sure it makes sense.
I will comment real quick.
Yes, sir.
Because of my motion, Mr. Chairman, one of the biggest problems that, uh, some citizens have in Laredo is that there's no availability to continue having a, uh, a, a drink, or a plate, or a grill after twelve in the morning, after twelve midnight.
You can't go to Border Foundry?
Let me, let me go ahead and finish.
Okay.
So, this is, uh, something that is being centered, like Border Foundry and this particular bar and grill, see? Now, if they're gonna go ahead and stick to bar only, I will go ahead and, uh, and, uh, cancel my motion and rephrase it. But as it is right now, I'm basing my motion, there's gonna be a bar and grill.
That's correct.
So if I'm correct, then that's the, that's what the motion is.
Would you wanna say something?
No, I was just gonna say that, that it should be fifty percent food sales.
Yeah.
As opposed to a hundred percent, uh, bar sales.
Commissioner Varon, did you have something to say?
I just, the only question I wanna see is, if, what was the distance between the current proposed bar, or bar, or is it bar restaurant, bar, to the door of the compound of that office of, of the school site?
Who did the review of this case?
Uh, Ms., did you do it, Ms. Garcia?
It was Ms. Garcia.
Yeah.
But, um, sorry, if I, if I made that, the, if you read staff's, um, recommendation on, uh, number two, it does have the distance requirement for the nearest residential and the distance requirement to the nearest school. And the distance.
But we don't have a diagram showing the, the measurement.
Probably was calculated.
It just, it does show.
Or this is to here, a school.
My question is, what's the distance between here and this door here?
Which door?
Well, that's why they're asking for a C U P.
The door is, right.
It's a school, not the bus transportation office.
That's a parking there.
That's what the law says.
The law says it's gotta be a school.
It has to be a school site?
Yes.
Like an act, or not, eh, the, the buildings or offices of school site?
That is a transportation center, yeah, so, yeah, okay. Alright, so, I got a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll make another motion.
Motion dies for lack of a second, alright?
Oi. I'll make a motion to approve, subject to, uh, excluding number ten.
We have a motion to approve, subject to eliminating number ten, do we have a second?
Second.
Oh. We have a second, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Uh, for clarification, then music will be allowed.
No.
Not.
Eliminating, eliminating number ten.
Outdoor music is allowed.
Eliminating number ten is what the motion is, okay?
Which will result in?
Allowing music.
Allowing music.
Why?
'Cause there's nothing, no, no.
Because there's no prohibition.
There's what?
There's no prohibition to having outdoor music.
So we're just trying to put it a little bit.
Thing is, with this particular permit, you can, so then what your motion would be is to say
Not to allow.
We're not allowing outdoor music instead, that's what you would say.
Yes.
And the motion is amended, uh.
Not to allow.
Not, not to allow outdoor music, is second, uh.
Outspoken.
Uh, you, you seconded, right, so would you accept the amendment?
Yes, accept the amendment.
Okay, so we have the motion, which is, means it would be going for approval, not allowing outdoor music, alright, and we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, those against? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot sixteen, block two, Laredo Town Center, phase two, located at fifty-four oh one Balbulut Loop from M one to B four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Applicant Shasii She Vasmini, owner, arms, LTD applicant Sammy, I, I apologize, I, I can't say the last name, and Luis, Jose Luis Gamear, the area representative. From property description, lo- location is lot sixteen, block two, Laredo Town Center, phase two, located at fifty-four oh one Balbulut Loop. Zone change request is an M one to a B four, proposed use is a commercial plaza, letter sent seven four zero against zero. Location view?
Sure.
Aerial view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff support the proposed zone change. Proposed motion, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, this is a public hearing, anybody who speaks in favor, in favor?
My name's Sammy Vaquini, and I represent the owner, uh, I'm in favor of the zone change.
Okay. This particular, uh, zone change, is this is the property that's in front of this commercial strip there, is that?
It's right next to the commercial strip.
Right next to it on the north side.
Right, right across from the airport.
Yeah.
Right.
But right next to that little commercial strip that's there.
Right.
That, that, that's the track, okay, alright, alright, anybody have any questions? No? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody?
I have a question.
Alright.
Initially, when Town Center was, um, being proposed to be built, one of the conditions of that being built was that there were some storm scepters that would protect the integrity of the water from runoff going into Lake Casablanca, were they ever built in this property?
Utilities here?
No, it's environmental.
Environmental, or, would know that?
Probably. This is.
You repeat the question, please?
The, the, uh, landslopes toward the lake.
Toward this detention pond, it slopes towards a detention pond behind.
Which eventually goes to the lake.
Right, correct.
Okay, my question is, when the initial agreement to lease the land to the owners, or to the people that are there, they were going to construct storm scepters, I remember the big fight in the newspapers, were the so, storm scepters ever built?
Well, we bought this from the owners, and all this was before, uh, we came in, we're doing a soccer.
This happened twenty years ago when I was here.
There's a detention pond there, so the water is draining towards a detention pond, we're building a soccer complex behind this property, and then, and all the water is draining towards that area.
So you're gonna build a, a, uh, soccer field?
Yes, right behind this property, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else who wishes to speak, for or against, for or against? For that, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation.
Alright, second.
And there's a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against, motion carries, next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately three point two one acres of land line, uh, portion thirty-two, this property is located north of State Highway three fifty-nine and east of Delphina Avenue from R one to M one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant A E P Texas Inc., owner, Civil Design Services Inc., applicant John Wit slash design, Civil Design Services Inc. representative. Property description, location, approximately three point twenty-one acres, located north of State Highway three fifty-nine and east of Delphina Avenue. Zone change requests, R one to an M one, proposed use electrical substation, letter sent eight four zero against zero. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff support the proposed zone change. Proposed motion, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Tony Arson, manager of external affairs for A P Texas, and we do support this, this is for an electrical substation to address the growth that's taking place in this region, it will provide additional capacity and reliability for that area.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Arson? Thank you, Mr. Arson. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against? Against, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for an urgent care clinic outpatient on lot twenty-six B, lot one, San Isidro North Substate subdivision, phase four, located at ten nine oh one International Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is San Isidro Northeast LTD, owner, Vio Med Urgent Care, is the applicant, Ricardo M. Villarreal is the representative. Property location, description, lot twenty-six B, block one, San Isidro Northeast subdivision, phase four, located at ten nine oh one International Boulevard. Zone change request, it's a conditional use permit, proposed use is urgent care clinic outpatient, letter sent fourteen four zero against zero. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff support the proposed conditional use permit. Proposed motion, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody who speaks in favor? Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ricardo Villarreal with Topside Civil Group, representing the owner and applicant. Here to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Villarreal? Thank you, Mr. Villarreal, you're in favor of this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against? Against? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second advice.
Second by an advice. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Then the next item, amending the city of Laredo subdivision ordinance, chapter two, section two dash three point one, entitled subdivision plaits, and section two dash three point two, entitled subdivision plaits middle requirements to reduce the number of physical paper plat reproduction submitted with the application for the consideration of general plans, master plans, and subdivision plans. To require all applicants for the consideration of general master, general plans, master plans, and subdivision plaits include a twenty-four inch by thirty-six inch digital reproduction of the plat and include a geo reference CAD file in a format which is compatible with the city of Laredo's G I S software. Providing this ordinance shall be cumulative, provided for severability, and publication effective date. All right?
Mr. Chairman, sorry for making that so long. Just to give a little bit of background, currently in our subdivision ordinance, it requires that the engineers submit ten paper copies of their master plans, general plans, and plaits. And that's, that's becoming a little excessive. Changes in technology have really advanced, and there's really no need to require so many copies. It results in a lot of waste. Additionally, we would like to request for the engineers to submit instead of, or reduce it from ten to one, but also have a PDF version of the copy, and that'll really help us along with putting it in the packet, making it easier to read, and eliminate some of that. And then the last thing we'd like to do is request that they submit a geo reference CAD file in G I S format. Right now, what we're doing is working with overlays in Google Earth, but this will give us a real good file to help us work with. We do have a real good G I S analyst on staff that recently came in on the planning department, so he'll be definitely available to help the engineers if they have any questions or have any issues in putting those submissions. So we just have, just a couple of the, or we have the sections that we plan to change underlined there on the screen, and we ask for your recommendation, or we ask for your recommendation to counsel. Here's the proposed motion. Now, I would like to make one comment, though, is that the way the ordinance is written, unfortunately, the P and Z commission cannot take action on this item. It has to be recessed, this particular item, and we have to bring it back at the next meeting at which you're, at which you'll send your.
Versus a public hearing.
Just a public hearing for your comments.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the engineering community aware of what you're trying to do?
No. That's why this thing is being read today. That's why it's only being read so that it's advising everybody.
Correct.
No action will be taken. It is more of a public advisement to the engineering community. Now, what I would recommend is that you maybe have a meeting with the engineering community just to, you know, put them on notice as to what is being proposed. I don't think they're gonna disagree with you because you're gonna reduce a lot of paper form, and everybody's probably using CAD files anyway. But this, this is the correct process to advise everybody of what's gonna be the change. And I would recommend to all the engineers that are out there, if you guys have any concerns, to contact the planning director or Rafael with any concerns.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, we'll definitely do that. We'll work with him.
All right, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, the next item that we have is review and consideration of the following master plans. Review and revision of the Roma's Verano subdivision master plan, the intended residential. All right? The intent is, the purpose of the revision is to reclassify the detention pond into open space.
Yes, sir. The applicant is Summers Family Partnership, engineer K C I, Key C I Technologies. Proposed use residential. Zoning for this seventy-five lot development is R one. Location view? Aerial view? Proposed plat, master plan? Staff comments, planning? Traffic safety, parks and leisure? Proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's staff, J. Justicentro with Key C I. Here to concur with comments and try to answer any questions you may have.
You concur with all the comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for? Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve subject to comments.
Second.
Motion and a second by Commissioner de Valina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item, review and, of the revision of the Cuatro Vientos East, right, right subdivision master plan, A ten, is residential and commercial. The purpose of the revision is to reconfigure phases.
Yes, sir. For the record, the applicant is Four V Holdings, engineer, poros, nan's engineering. Proposed use residential and commercial. The zoning for this six hundred and eighty-four lot development is R one A. Location view? Aerial view? Master plan? Staff comments, planning? Parks and leisure? Proposed motion.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Wayne Nance with Poros Engineering, and we agree with all the comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Nance? Nope. Do I hear a motion?
Is this inside the city?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner de Valina, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dominguez. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is consideration of follow preliminary plots and preliminary reclass. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Cuatro Vientos East, right, right subdivision, phase eight. The intent is residential?
Yes, sir. For, for the record, the applicant is Four V Holdings, engineer, poros engineering, poros nan's engineering. Proposed use residential. The zoning for this sixty-six lot development is R one A. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Proposed plat? Staff comments, plant, planning? Parks and leisure? And the proposed motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne Nance with Poros Engineering again. We agree with all the staff comments.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion? Motion? We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second subject to the conditions that are listed.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is preliminary consideration of the plat of India Chat Industrial Park, phase four. The intent is industrial.
Yes, sir. For the record, applicant is Verde Corp., engineer, poros nan's engineering. Proposed use industrial. The zoning for this twenty-nine lot development is M one, and a portion is A G. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? The proposed plat? Staff comments, planning, traffic safety? Proposed motion.
Thank you.
Chairman, Wayne Nance with Poros Engineering again. We agree with all staff comments on this one as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Do we have any update from Texan on for the rent with the Char Ruth and Jerome?
My understanding, the last I heard, they're getting ready to, to.
To let it?
To let it, yes. Talking to our, our engineer of the city, he was, he was telling us, so it's getting ready to go.
Yeah, the traffic is really getting bad.
It is, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve subject to comments.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second?
Yes. Oh, Mr. We didn't go ahead.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the plat of Las Aldias subdivision, phase two. The intent is residential and commercial?
Yes, sir. The, for the record, the applicant is Garrett Fort Hoover, Cayetano Development. Engineer Jeffrey Puig, Key C I Technologies. Proposed use residential and commercial. The zoning for this two hundred and seventy-two lot development is B one, B three, R one, and R one M H. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Proposed plat? Staff comments, planning? Traffic safety? Parks and leisure? Proposed motion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jeff Puig, representative of Key C I Technologies, and the applicant, here to answer any questions. We do concur with staff comments.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Puig?
What is the access, access to the two eighty-three from this property?
If you'll bring up the exhibit, we can provide, it should show that we have access both with Opel Drive. It's a collector that will go to Celito Lindo and then Obsidian as well in the north, but the direct access will come off of what we're classifying as Street M. And the comment from the, the city was to, to move Street L up to connect to Street G. We, we have street names to be labeled, but for right now, that's what we're doing. So the access will be right in, right out on A three.
It'll be on the, the south side of the creek that runs through there? And it'll connect, it'll have a right in, right out? There's no crossover? But further south from Obsidian?
It's in, in whose track?
It, this is in the Moore, well, this is in the Las Aldeas track.
Las Aldeas.
South.
Who used to be the owner?
Mr. Moore?
Oh, okay. I know where it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second advice.
Second advice. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the replat of lot one, lot two, and lot three, block one, Escondido subdivision, unit three, plat into Alta Vista subdivision, phase four. The intent is residential and commercial?
Yes, sir. The applicant is W W Escondido L P, engineer, consulting, Pego Consulting. Proposed use residential and commercial. The zoning for this seven lot development is B three. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Proposed replat? Staff comments, planning? Engineering, traffic safety, and parks and leisure? Proposed motion.
Do we have anybody? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, Rudy Santillan, Pego Consulting, we concur with all the comments.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve subject to the conditions.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Taken.
A second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The next item, preliminary consideration of replat of track one, Jacobman Peñitas replat into lot one, block one, Margal plat. The intent is commercial?
Yes, sir. The, for the record, the applicant is Javier Martinez, Margal, Mar, Margal Empire, engineer, Pego Consulting. Proposed use, commercial. The zoning for this one lot development is not applicable as it is located in the ETJ. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Proposed replat? Staff comments, planning? Engineering? Proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Pego Consulting, we concur with the comments for this project.
What is the proposed use?
It'll be logistics, a trucking company? Commercial?
Are, are we gonna require that there be a deceleration, an acceleration lane, or a turning lane? I, I frequently drive this road, and I see all these trucking companies that are being, being approved on a two-lane highway that's a farm-to-market road that is not necessarily the best of roads. And keep adding more traffic to it. And the consequences of that may be that we're gonna have somebody get killed hitting one of these trucks that's turning to the left.
Agreed. We can, we can get with the county and talk about that in the design plans. But to keep that in mind, because, yes, I agree, that is dangerous. Okay. Right now, the way you're proposing this, what is your access point to this property?
Well, the main access is through FM thirty-three thirty-eight.
Okay.
And then there's Peñitas West Drive, and then there's Chicote, so.
Yeah, that's why I was asking you, because it's, you're coming off of the road into, your property is located within the interior of this particular area.
Right.
But the main turn is off of thirty-three thirty-eight?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I think it's something that the planning department really needs to start taking a look at.
I don't think it's your fault, but I think it's somebody else's fault.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve subject to comments.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the plat of track fifteen A Gupta plat. The intent is commercial?
Yes, sir. For the record, the applicant is Anel Gupta, engineer, Ricardo Ramos. Proposed use, commercial. The zoning for this one lot development is not applicable as it's located in the ETJ. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Proposed plat? Staff comments, planning? Proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ricardo Ramos, and I represent the client. And we reviewed the comments, and we're okay with all of them. The only one, if, if we can modify a little bit, was the sewer requirement. That if, we'll, we'll need to install a sewer if we're within the three hundred feet.
Correct. Well, that's, that's a, that's an ordinance. So if you're within three hundred feet, I mean, that's, that's just an ordinance. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Everything else, we're good.
So you're good with, so what was your, I think, is you're talking about comment five, remove certificate regarding the on-site sewer facility?
Yes.
Disconnect must, this track must connect to sewer, sewer services. You're saying you want that removed, or what?
No, if, if we, we're found that it, that we're within the three hundred feet, we'll connect the sewer.
Okay.
If it's not.
Okay.
That's by the ordinance.
That's right. That's by ordinance. All right, thank you. All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve subject to comments.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Taken.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of plat of D&amp;J Alexander subdivision phase 31, the intent is residential.
Yes, sir. For the record, the applicant is D&amp;J Alexander Investments, investment engineer Armando Guerra from Premier Engineering Serving. Proposed use is residential. The zoning for this 18 lot development is R1 and B3. Location view, aerial view, street view, proposed plat, staff comments, planning, parks and leisure, proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Sergio Narviles with Premier Engineering for the record, and we are here to answer any questions that you have.
You concur with all the comments?
Yes, we review the comments and, yeah, we, we...
All right. Questions from anybody?
On number two, when you say that it's part of the noise ordinance and it requires a certain type of insulation on the roof structure, who makes that compliance? The building department?
The, the building department, their review will, will...
And this will be on the plat so that they can see it.
I wish they had told me that when I put a skylight in my roof. Twenty years ago.
Yeah, it's part of the noise ordinance, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of plat of D&amp;J Alexander, phase 15, the Alexander plat, a lot six, block two, the intent is commercial.
Yes, sir. For the record, applicant is D&amp;J Alexander Investment, engineer Armando Guerra from Premier Engineering Serving, proposed use commercial. The zoning for this one lot development is B1. Location view, aerial view, street view, proposed plat, staff comments, planning, parks and leisure, proposed motion.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Sergio Narviles with Premier Engineering for the record, and we are here to answer any questions that you have, and we concur with, with the planning, staff comments.
Okay.
And we just want to remove the item number two since we have the Lomer F information for the playing zone, so we thought that the, the note number two can be removed at this time.
Have you turned it into planning?
Yes, we turned it...
Has the Lomer been turned in? Are, are they aware of it?
Well, we did find some research, well, we did a little bit of research on this, and we did find the Lomer F, the Lomer, the letter map provision based on fill. We were not able to actually pinpoint how that would overlay. So it does, they are saying that it is, that, that it's out, but we just need to make sure that that's evidence, because we couldn't find...
That can be resolved at the, at the one-stop shop.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We also need that information...
Okay, we'll leave the comment in here, you can resolve it at the one-stop shop.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
I move to approve, subject to the conditions.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The next item is preliminary consideration of the Fito Santos plat, the intent is commercial.
Yes, sir. For the, for the record, the applicant is Arloso and Diana Santos Family, engineer Victor Linares, proposed use commercial. The zoning for this one lot development is B3. Location view, aerial view, street view, proposed plat, staff comments, planning, and parks and leisure, and proposed motion.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission, my name is Victor Inares with Savio Engineering and Associates. We concur with staff comments, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, if any.
Why, why do you have comment one and then you have comment two, remove comment one?
The, the comment one, it's just that it's, it's an incomplete, you just put the purpose of this plat is to, and then, so we just fix up the language there.
Uh-huh.
Just defer to fix up the language on that, on that one item. On comment number one.
Okay, so, are you saying that we should, we could do away with one and two? On the comments from planning?
On the plat note. On the plat note, there, there's a description about the use, and we, we left it blank because we were still talking to the north to see the intent, but we can pretty much get rid of that note. But that's on the plat note, not...
It's a plat note, yeah, because this is a replat.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, I got you. All right, note. Okay, any other questions? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve, subject to the conditions.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you. Next item, reconsideration of the following preliminary plats. Preliminary reconsideration of plat of Track A, Seven Flags Edition, and the granting of a variance to waive the 50-foot right-of-way and 30-foot paving section requirement pursuant to Section 3-2, Letter A of the subdivision ordinance.
Yes, sir. The applicant for the record is Carter Feldoff, engineer Justin Catwell, proposed use commercial. The zoning for this one lot development is not applicable as it is located in the ETJ. Location view, aerial view, the plat, staff comments, planning, buyer, proposed motion.
All right, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jackson Hughes, project developer for Seven Flags Project. Here to answer any questions you guys have about the plat or the variance.
I have a question for you, you were asking for a waiver of the right-of-way and the paving section.
Yes, sir. Many reasons for this, first one being that the easement for the 30 feet has been secured and the landowner has died in the last four years, I mean, four months. For that reason, we will not be able to adjust that easement for the next one to two years because it's under probate. Other than that, there are other reasons. For one, the project will be unmanned and autonomous, so we will only be accessing that site once every three or four years for maintenance. On top of that, the access road is 100% private and notably Wormsor Road, which it is connecting to, is also unpaved.
What, what is the use?
It's going to be a battery storage facility for the grid.
For what?
A battery storage facility for the grid in order to supply reliability to the local grid. Electric.
They're talking about power?
Yes.
Okay, now, what is the planning department, I know your comment's in here...
Ultimately, it's up to, it's up to the commission. I mean, the engineer does bring up some valid points, it won't be serviced maybe once every four years, and it will be, there's, right next to it, there is an electrical substation by AEP which they'll be connecting to. I mean, the comment is there on the ordinance, but again, it's at the discretion of the commission, but...
Represent AEP as well?
Represent the developers for the project.
Okay, so it's a battery farm?
Yes.
All right, how big is the farm? How many acres?
Five acres.
Five acres? Okay, so your main access to this particular property is coming off of Wormsor and then cutting into the property?
Yes, sir.
Wormsor's an unpaved road, what is, how does this? I mean, what is the long-range thoroughfare plan in this area? I know that Wormsor Road, one of the roads was moved, so how does that come, how does this Wormsor Road that is existing right now? I mean, what is the intent of the planning department for the future of this particular Wormsor Road?
It should take Wormsor east. There was a change, but that's, that's closer to the west towards Loop 20.
Right.
This is further going east.
Right.
So eventually, it'll be developed to be part of the thoroughfare plan.
Is it, it's on there right now?
It's on there, yes.
It's on the, it's in the thoroughfare plan.
But it's a 50-foot road, right?
It, it varies.
Yes, I was gonna say...
It varies, it's by prescription, it varies in that area. It could be 60, it could be 50, it just varies.
Okay, and, and, see, that's why I'm, we have to look at this whole big picture. I mean, I know what he wants to do, but I don't wanna get caught in a situation where we do something that in the future is gonna impact a roadway. That's why I'm asking you guys...
Yeah, and, and the particular track that he has is not actually fronting Wormsor.
Wormsor Road.
So that was supposed to be...
He's just gonna come off of it.
Right, so in the future, if there was to be some right-of-way acquisition, we, we would not be...
It would not be this applicant at all.
It would not be this applicant.
How big is the track that's fronting Wormsor Road?
Pardon me?
The track that's in front of him, fronting Wormsor Road is how big?
I don't know, I wanna say, the parent track was what, like 30 acres, I think?
Yes.
The parent track.
If, if we...
And what happens is that...
Go ahead, you're, you're still...
And when that comes in, you're gonna require the 30-acre track to pave?
Well, when they come in to develop, they'll be, they'll be required to put in the, the width of the improvements for their development if they come in.
Yeah, because they're, they're putting it. All right, yes, sir.
What happened is that we're, we're accepting a preliminary, Mr. Chairman, condition, and once it is, the development comes to that section, whoever has the access on that easement is not required to pave it. At least that's what I understand, once we, we grant the barrier, the barriers. So if they were to transfer this particular land, it will transfer with a variance. I would, if they're, if they're gonna access once every three years, then why even talk about the variance? I mean, the traffic is not gonna require for them to pave it unless they provide a, a over-the-road, which could be a caliche road. You're right by, 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 by granting that, that we might be doing something that might affect development in the future. At least that's the way I see it.
Because a proposed comment here on a 50-foot wide, 30-foot paving section, you're talking about from Wormsor Road to this particular track, that's, that's what you were talking about.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, on the screen, you do have, so here we have Wormsor, which is also known as Ice Center at some points. Here is the AEP tract and their current electrical substation that is there.
Okay.
The, their five-acre track is actually up here, so it does not have frontage. What, what happens is, or what's, the ordinance calls for the easement from the primary road to the back to be 50-foot wide with a 30-foot paving section. So that's, that's what they're, they're requesting. But their tract is, the five acres is actually in this area right here.
So they're gonna, they're gonna build a caliche road to wherever they have to go? And if the city ever annexes a property into that area, the city's gonna be stuck with the bill to pave the road to the area?
To pave the road to them?
Yes.
No.
No? Who else is gonna pay it?
Well, I mean, it would be, it'll be on them if they did it develop.
Right.
It'll be on them.
No, because they've got a five-acre track and that's it, they're just providing, they're getting access to it. As this whole area develops, you've got an easement that's going up to a particular property, and once you annex this area, it's gonna require a paved section. So that means the city would have to do the street.
Who are you gonna dedicate this easement that goes through your property to?
To the long-term project owners.
Which is?
It's UBS Bank.
UK?
UBS Bank.
And they're gonna develop the property?
Correct. They're gonna, they're gonna finance and build the property.
Now, approval for this particular road section has to come from the county also.
Yes, sir.
And, and what is the, the county's position on this, Mr. Engineer?
The county's position, Texan?
No, the county. Or have you gone to the county with the plat?
We have, I don't believe we have.
Okay.
I don't have to talk.
I think at this point, it would probably serve as better to leave this comment on here, this is preliminary at this point, until the whole thing can be resolved with the county also and the city. I would be more comfortable in leaving the comment in here until we can get this whole issue resolved.
I move to approve, subject to the conditions, if you're ready.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Any second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? All right, motion carries. All right, now we're going into item number 10, and this is consideration of the following final plats and final replats, and we've got 10A, 10B, 10C, 10D, 10EF, GH, I...
I move to...
K...
I move to consolidate.
And 11A, B, and C, so there's a motion to consolidate 10 and 11?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we, okay, motion then...
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, 10 and 11, and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against?